Chair will call the March 2nd, 2021 meeting to the City Council to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you'd please call the roll.
Alderman Redpath here. Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderman Proctor.
Here.
Alderwoman DeCenzo.
Present.
Alderman McMenamin.
Here.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Present.
Alderman Donilon.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, a quorum is present.
Thank you. Chair will entertain a motion dispensed with the reading of the minutes of the February 16th, 2021 City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
So moved, second.
The move in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances in the record of this City Council meeting.
So moved, Mayor.
Second.
Move in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda in the record of this City Council meeting.
So moved, second.
The move in second, any discussion?
I know.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved, second.
The move in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The, I guess we'll call the roll. Where's the voting board?
All right.
Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor.
Yes.
Alderwoman DeCenzo.
Yes.
Alderman McMenamin.
Yes.
Alderwoman Connolly.
Aye.
Alderman Donilon.
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer.
Aye.
Nine ayes, ma'am.
Thank you.
There are no nays.
Is there any action on the agenda numbers that remain tabled during committee?
Mayor.
Yeah, Alderman Gregory.
I would like to move 2021-069 to the front of the agenda.
So moved, second.
The move in second, to move Agenda Number 2021-069 on, to the front of the agenda for emergency passage. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Agenda Number 2021-069, ordinance supporting Roy Williams Jr. to the office of Alderman for Ward III for emergency passage. Chair will entertain a motion to place Agenda Number 2021-069 on final passage.
So moved, second.
Move in second, discussion? We do have several people signed up to speak, so Clerk, if you'd want to call them up.
Mayor, real quick.
Alderman Hanauer.
I'm concerned with the fact that we, in the past, we've had, had people that have come on board that have said they were not going to run for the office at the next election. I think if you go back even into Mayor Houston days, and actually as far back, maybe it was to Mayor Edwards, right after Mayor Dabbling, that it kind of started that way. And, you know, I don't know why all of a sudden it changed. So I just wanted to tell you, I'm kind of disappointed in the fact that we're, we're going away from that because what you're asking us to do is, is give someone a big leg up on, on the election. And I guess that's kind of the big elephant in the room. And so I just thought I'd, I'd bring it out. And I think there's a lot of us that are concerned about that, so.
Well, I'm not sure if Mr. Williams plans on running or not. I didn't ask him or any of the candidates that question. And actually, I'll be going back to Edwards. I think that's when Alderman Dove served as Director of OBM. At that time, Mr. Smart Jesse was appointed, and I think Dove was already on the ballot, I believe. And then so, of course, he went back to run for Alderman because Edwards wasn't running for mayor at the time he was running for Alderman. And so that's where that all came about. Well, four years later, Smart Jesse did run, and it didn't help him much, I don't think, with regards to that. But the other one with regards to my recent recollection is with Ward VI. And the reason that came into being is because there was a special election. You know, when you have a special election, you're appointing someone for a short period of time, and they're not really establishing a record, and what they would go off of is City Council and the mayor approve me. But in this case, there's two years. An individual would set their own record. Personally, I've never been in favor of not having, I think that's up to the individual. I think it's up to the individuals that they represent. That goes back to my county board days. When I was on the county board, a little history here, there's a county board seat that became available, and I pushed for somebody to be appointed to that position, and they didn't do it. And the reason they said was because she was a, going to be a candidate, and lo and behold, that person was Doris Turner. But then they turned around and did it for another person. And so, you know, that's a, and that's not here, but that's the history. And I think for myself, I always looked at the individual, the individuals that they serve, and who best to bring forward to serve that area. And that's why I selected Roy Williams. He's the individual that would represent that for a number of reasons, but he can stand up here and answer the question, if you want to ask him that question, if he's going to run again.
Real quick.
Sure.
I'll use myself as an example. When, when Tim, Tim stepped down from Ward 10, I actually applied to get, to get the job, and with the intent that I was going to run. And, and they ended up bringing in Jim McDonough, and I understand, I understood where he was coming from, you know, where, where at the time it was Mayor Houston was coming from. You know, he wanted to give everybody a fair shake for the election. I'm just, I'm just, you know, it just seems like that's been the, the way it's gone for quite a few years and quite a few times that this has happened, and, you know, all of a sudden, there's a change. So I just thought I'd, I'd bring it out and.
I guess, Corporation Council, is there a requirement that the individual whoever selected, even if they're appointed, can they change their mind? I mean, that doesn't mean you, you know, you can say today, oh, I'm not going to run or whatever, you can change your mind. Is there a prohibition for someone to be appointed that they cannot run for election?
Well, sorry, there's, you know, there's nothing, there's nothing in the statute, either ordinance or in statute, that addresses any person who is appointed, you know, to fill out a term in relation to them being this, you know, candidate subsequently. The rules are silent on that.
So I'd ask Roy Williams Jr. if you'd come up, and the Alderman is asking whether or not you are going to run for election if you're appointed. So when this all became, you know, urgent with my Alderman applying to become a senator, the discussion became in the war, well, who would take her place? We had to wait for the direction of what the process was going to be. So all I've done is follow the process. But to answer your direct question, my intention is to learn and to find out how it's going to go. We're talking two years. So I'm thinking it'd be about a year before I even begin to think about reelection. I want to spend this time pretty much dealing with the violence and cleaning up Ward, Ward III and doing things like that, and then eventually figuring out my way if I'm going to decide if I'm going to run for my own term. This was, what I applied for was just filling her vacancy without being told that I would have to say I'm not going to run. I wasn't asked that, so we didn't address that. So right now, I don't know if I'm going to run again or not. I'm just going to do the job for right now.
Thank you. Alderman McMenamin, then Alderwoman DeCenzo.
Mr. Williams, thank you for offering to take the seat for roughly two years. Sure. You've got some very strong endorsements from others, including former Alderman McNeil. I think that's very significant. I think your participation in the Faith Coalition for the Common Good is a very strong representation of your work and how you get along with the folks. And I guess a couple of the examples that were given just now about others that made a commitment not to run, but those two examples I can think of in Ward 10, that was for, when Tim Griffin stepped aside, I think that was like a four-month deal, four-month deal, where you didn't want to give someone that's going to be sitting there for four months a real strong advantage. And I think the other example would be Barry Becker. That was again, I think about a five-month temporary appointment, and I can understand the rationale for not trying to give someone an advantage. In your case, you're going to be there for two years. You can get a good record or a bad record in two years. You could, and, you know, I see how you had a kidney transplant. Yes. Who knows what's going to happen in two years with something like that? So I admire you for coming forward and willing to serve, and I think you've got a good background. You were a veteran for 15 years until your kidneys started acting up, and I hope we give you a unanimous vote tonight.
Thank you.
Alderwoman DeCenzo. If, we'll just, please hold it back. Thank you. Alderwoman DeCenzo.
Roy, I have nothing but respect for you. I've known you for 20 years. I discussed my concerns with you directly.
Sure.
My problem is I think the mayor put you in a horrible position, and I was one that was not allowed to be appointed because then four, four months is, that gives you a leg up over two years. I think the quote at the time was, "It is not our job to pick winners and losers." And I agree with that. It's not our job to pick winners and losers. And if you stand here tonight and say, "I'm not going to run again in two years," then you have my vote. But I feel terrible for the fact that you've been put in this position and that you weren't asked that question. Because people before you that were appointed were always asked that question. Are you going to run again? And I asked you that question myself, and you said the same thing. I have, I have no idea what's going to happen in two years. So I just want you to know, this isn't, whatever happens tonight, I have nothing but respect for you.
Okay.
I've worked with you, I've known you for a long time.
Yes.
But I don't like the process.
And actually, I didn't like the process for the selection of Ward VI. I think you should have been considered for the position. That was the City Council at the time said, "We're not going to elect or approve someone that has not served." I brought Roy Williams forward because Ward III needs him, plain and simple. He's the president of Faith Coalition for the Common Good. He's worked hard. He's a neighborhood of, oh.
Ernie Bankhead.
Ernie Bankhead neighborhood. You know, he works with Alice Rainey, and we know how hard that can be. But really, she keeps everybody on their toes, but realistically, his heart's in the right place. That's why I brought him forward, and I think it'd be a disservice, a disservice, if we don't move forward with the best person possible to represent Ward III at this time. And alls we have to do is drive around town and see what's happening. Or you don't have to drive around town. We're seeing the gun violence, we're seeing everything else that goes with it. And so that's why it's important to pick the best person that we can at this point in time.
Alderman Gregory.
So, you know, this, this whole situation gives me the heebie-jeebies and takes me back to my election. A bunch of freaking hurdles, excuse after excuse of why we can't go forward and do the right thing for, for, for the community. If, if we think as a council that it's a good idea to sit and let this seat stay open for another two weeks when we have a qualified man standing before us, willing to, to do the duty, that is not easy, then we are doing our citizens a disservice, period. Whatever, whatever problem that we got with Mayor Langfelder and all that, handle that elsewhere. But when we playing with the citizens on the East Side is wrong. And however this vote goes down tonight, if this man ain't sitting up here tonight, I don't want to hear about how much you care about the East Side, because that's wrong. And what's going on here tonight is wrong, period.
So there's anything else you'd like to say before we?
No, I appreciate being considered. I ask all you guys for your support. I'm going to practice what I practice with the other organizations. You know, Faith Coalition has a variety of religions, a variety of unions, and a very diverse, the most diverse group in diverse, diverse organization in Springfield. And, and we get it done. We're united and we get done. We focus on the common good, the things that we can get done. So I'm going to bring that skill to this council. It doesn't matter to me, male, female, Republican, Democrat, we're going to address the issues and address the problems. So I'm going to give you my full 101% support in taking care of the citizens of Ward III. And I know at times, I'm going to have to look at the bigger picture and take care of Springfield, Illinois, even at times when it ain't good for Ward III. I'm a true believer that there's no permanent friends, no permanent enemies. It's just work, and we just do the work. So there's going to be times when I won't be with you on your issue, and there's going to be times when I am with you on your issue. But I'm going to be upfront with you about it, and I'm going to be 100% about doing what's best for Springfield, Illinois.
Thank you.
So that's pretty much.
Clerk, if you'd. Thank you. Call the individuals that signed up to speak, please.
Teresa Haley.
Good evening, City Council members. I'm Teresa Haley. I live here in Springfield, and I am the president of the Springfield branch in the State Conference of the NAACP. I am excited about the fact that Roy Williams Jr. has been selected to serve as Ward Alderman of Ward III. I think it's great for the city of Springfield. I think it's great for the East Side of Springfield. Springfield has a lot of issues with racism, and we see it clearly today. We have a lot of issues with violence. Roy is the president of Faith Coalition, not because he's a black man, but because he's the best man for the position. Roy has also been selected by the mayor to serve as Alderman, not because he's a black man, because he's the best person for the position. He's humbled, he's committed, he's a Christian, he cares about his community, he doesn't only walk the walk, but he talks the talk. He does what needs to be done to bring the issues. He does not bite his tongue, and that's what we need on the East Side. Black men who are struggling with unemployment, with crime, with drug addiction, they need a role model. And Roy serves as that role model, not only to little boys and little girls, but to grown black men who don't have jobs. When we're talking about violence on the East Side, and that's where I live, we drive up and down our streets every day, and everyone else says, "Oh, my God, what's happening over there on the East Side? What are you guys going to do?" But if we have someone who's willing to stand up and speak up for the entire Springfield and especially the East Side community, I'm asking you, members of City Council, if you have not walked a mile in our shoes as black people, lived in our community, experienced and heard the gunshots, saw the fly dumping and everything else that Ward II Alderman has talked about in the last few weeks, I'm asking you to reconsider, put your politics aside and think about the people. Because the people on the East Side want Roy Williams Jr. to be our Alderman of Ward III. Thank you.
Tashiana.
No, she's not making. I'm not supposed to.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sherman Douglas.
Sharina.
Sharina. Sorry.
It's a penmanship.
Just correction, Honorable Mayor, Sharina Douglas.
Thank you, Sharina. Thank you.
Good evening to you, Mayor, to all of my hardworking public officials. I appreciate your work that you do. As a current executive board member of my local union, as a community activist, as a single mother, I understand what it is to be a leader, to be a public leader, and I commend you for your passion and just for your efforts. Alderman for Ward 10 did speak up about some concerns, and I want to address you specifically, Alderman, because your concerns, to me, seem political, and our concerns are community. We do not care right now, as we talked about, two years from now may not come, we are in the middle of a health pandemic, and we're talking about what's going to happen in two years politically? What's happening today? What happened last night on the East Side is what's important right now. Roy Williams Jr. is currently working right now, regardless of your vote, he is going to continue to work for Ward III, and he is going to bust his butt to make sure that those citizens are better, not politically better, but as a community. One of my favorite movies talks about togetherness and talks about us as individual fingers, and it's individually, right, a slap, it'll leave a little bruise, but a fist. Coming together as a community, we can make a mighty blow. You have individuals here that are here in support of Roy, but not just in support of Roy Williams Jr., in support of community. I am born and raised right here in Springfield. I am a graduate of Springfield Southeast High School, one of the best high schools, not because I graduated there, because it's about community and diversity, and we really foster that, and we live by that. Springfield lives by that. City Tournament shows that. We are all about community. We don't invite nobody. Rochester don't get to play with us. City Tournament is us. We love each other, and we are here in support, again, not of Roy, but of this community. So I urge you all, specifically you and Alderman in Ward 10, but everyone else, to go past politics and look into community. You have somebody who has stepped up to do your job, and you know your job is hard. You know every day, people are going to call you crying about the littlest of things and even the majorest of things, and you have somebody who is standing up with his chest out, willing to support you and support our community. So I urge you today to unanimously vote Ward III, Roy Williams Jr. for Alderman. Thank you.
Keisha Purchase. No? All right. The next would be Pastor Silas Johnson.
Good evening, Mayor and Alderman persons. My name is Silas Johnson. I stand here in support of Roy Williams for Ward III, not because of Roy, because I have, I'm probably, I'm the only person in a unique position. I live in Ward II, pastor in Ward III. In my entire area I live in is encompassed by my neighbors. I have had opportunity after opportunity to move out of Ward II to wherever I want to live. But I chose to live in the same area I pastor in, because if I'm going to lead my people, I want to know what they're feeling, I want to know what they're going through. Just the other night, they called me, I was in bed, and I didn't get out when they had the shooting, because we own 80 houses in the area. Now, now, when they called Roy, he did, he did answer, but so, but I went over yesterday to see all of the stuff that's there. I chose to live where I live, because I want to make a change. And the reason why I think Roy is, but he, I got to put my own change, he succeeded me as president of the Faith Coalition for the Common Good. One of the most diverse, and I emphasize the word diverse, organization I ever belonged to. And if we could ever get our community as diverse as Faith Coalition, I think we'll make a change. But I live where I live, not because I can't afford to live where else. I live where I live because I want to live there, and I want a Alderman that I can call on day or night, that can call on me. So I urge you to look, again, look beyond politics and look beyond feelings, and, and put yourself, do I want an Alderman that I could, that would tell me the truth, or do I want an Alderman that could blow smoke? I want an Alderman to tell me the truth. Reason why, I got to look at him every day. He is in my church every day. So that means whatever comes in Ward III also comes to our church. So I'm in support of him and all that there do. My connection with Sean is just as well. They're available, I'm available to them to do whatever they need to do. But I live where I live, because I want to live there, and I want to make the best. So, so make your vote about the community, not about personal feelings. Thank you.
Brenda Myers. Okay. That's it, Mayor. Okay. Anybody else to wish to make a statement? We have you signed up later, so is this when you wanted to, you were signed up, Alice, I think, wasn't Alice Rainey?
Yes.
Signed up. You'd state your name and address for the council, we'd appreciate it.
Michael Williams, 2536 Kilometer Circle, Springfield, Illinois. Yep, Roy's my brother. I would say Roy's the best job. I think all, all the other candidates were great. I think maybe he should have been asked that question during the process, but here's what I think should happen. If you guys don't want this to happen again, then after tonight, this council needs to take up that legislation and that, and that ordinance to say, from here on out, when somebody leaves, do we appoint, or do we make a special election? No matter how much time period is between the next election and the time of that appointment. That's what it should have happened after Mr. Dove, after Mr. Griffin, after Kristin DeCenzo. That should have happened then, not now, because now is here, and it's unfair that he has to sit here. And her individuals, and I know Kristin likes him because they worked together, and he talked about how him and Kristin were really good. But she feels that a certain thing happened to her that's happening for Roy, and you feel that a certain thing is happening for Roy that didn't happen for others. That should have been solved quite some time ago. This, he's not the first appointment, and I'm telling you, he's probably not going to be the last. So the next time that there's going to be an appointment, this council needs to make sure how that process is going to run. And tonight, let's get Roy in, and then I'm sure I can talk him into some, you know, working on that ordinance with you guys, and I'm fine with all of you. You know what I'm saying? I know it's a tough job. I'm so hard on Sean Gregory. I am so hard. I'm going to be so, 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 so hard on Roy Williams Jr. I'm telling you, they are going to get it. It is not going to be fun. But he's a good, he's a good big brother. He's got a great heart. Takes a lot to get him angry. He's got a good heart, and it would be a shame that if he would have to wait or just because things didn't happen in the past that are happening now would affect him. That's painful to accept. So I just ask you guys to rethink it, and I'm hoping you guys vote him in tonight. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Alderman. My name is Linda Byrd. I reside at 1028 North Replich, here in Springfield, Illinois. I got a call to say that you are going to be voting to make a final decision after appointment by Mayor of Roy Williams to the vacant spot once held by Doris Turner. I thought about it. I gave it a lot of thought. Do I come, do I not come? And if I come, why should I come? I'm a loyalist, yes, but I'm also a realist. I look at the options, I weigh why, why not? If not, then what? So I'm here in support of Roy, Roy Williams Jr. Why am I here? I thought about the climate in our city, what's happening? Pandemic is everywhere. It's everywhere. So, get out the pandemic, okay? What's going on in Springfield? What's going on on the East Side? What's going on in our state, in our country, in our nation? What is happening? Situational ethics. Why am I bringing up situational ethics? Why am I bringing up situational ethics? I once asked someone that was running for candidacy, do you do or would you do what is right because it is right to do? Or would you do what is right because someone else told you to do something? That's a hard question. That's a hard question for someone. Why? Because we're all people. We have our agendas, we have our things we want, how we think it should be. It's always been this way. I want to see this person. Pharmaceutical companies, businesses, situational ethics. What do we need here in Springfield? We need someone who is not going to be twisted or turned by situational ethics. That they will do what is right because it is right. It is morally right, it is ethically right, it is right for those that they serve. You're in elected positions. Elected by your constituents to do what is right for those who elected you and also those who are in this city. What can I say about Roy Williams? I may not always like what he tells me. I may not always like what he does. But one thing I can say, he weighs the issues. He considers the pros and the cons. And irregardless of the consequences of what he thinks someone else may tell him will happen or will not happen, that he does what is right for the people he is serving. Now, Roy has worked for the Springfield community. He has worked for the state. He has worked on issues for the state, the Springfield community, and at the federal level. All of you know those who applied for the position. I don't know all of their qualifications. You don't. And in your heart of hearts, can you honestly say that there is someone else that is more qualified than Roy Williams Jr.? We need honest, open, transparent, unbiased individual in that position. Someone who is willing and has shown by their past endeavors and interaction with other community organizations here in Springfield, state and federal, that they will work for the common good. I'm not here as a part of any organization. I'm here as Linda Byrd to tell you that I honestly feel and only you know in your heart of hearts, you're the only one that's going to have to deal with your decision that you make here tonight. Two years? What's two years? Two years without someone of this caliber? Can you live with that? Thank you.
Any other questions for the, or discussion from the council?
Mayor, real quick.
Yes, Alderman Hanauer?
It was addressed, I, I had people address me. First of all, if, I'm not doing anything for political reasons. I don't, I don't, I don't know a whole lot of the people that, that applied. And this isn't against Mr. Williams. I think that, um, no offense, but I, I think that it would have been good for you to talk to some of the Aldermen on, on, on what we, we wanted to see too. I, I think right away, that was one of the things I said. I wanted someone that, that wasn't going to run for office. And I, I, and talking to a lot of people on the council, that's what they wanted. But, you know, and I, you know, I, I just assumed that's, that's the way it was going to be. So, this has not, this isn't political, because I don't, I don't know, I saw the names, I, I know very few of the people that, that rank, that are, that are on the list. So, um, you know, this was about what we've done in the past and what the precedence was. And, uh, we apparently were changing it, so, um, you know, next time we have an opening, then we're going to get more people that are, that are going to want to run and, and I could see, it could, it could get ugly. And, uh, you know, that, that's where I stood on this from day one. And, uh, but unfortunately, we were never asked, you know, what we as a council were looking for unless, I, I'm not privy to everybody's conversations with, you know, but I know I was not asked, so.
Yeah, I think the incorporation council can correct me if I'm wrong, or you can clarify. According to city code, the mayor makes the appointment, uh, through the process and the council confirms it. So this is your time to confirm. Uh, what I look at is just like all my commission appointments. I've been criticized immensely for keeping people that ran, that didn't support me. I've kept people. The reason I keep people is for the diversity, which you talked about with the Faith Coalition. I don't, I pick people because it's the right fit. In this case, I think we're doing a, if, if this doesn't happen tonight, it's a disservice because any of your wards would want representation. And the reason the mayor is the one that selects it is because the mayor's elected as a whole of the city. Not in Ward Ten, not Ward Nine, or all the others. The whole of the city. So what happens in Ward Ten, happens to me. What happens Ward Nine, happens to me. Ward One, Two, all of them, happened to me. That's why it's written in city code that way. And that's because the voting rights lawsuit. Like, that's where all this came about. Now, with regards to the process that, again, I didn't agree with, the process of not running or having someone appointed to run, I, I wish Alderman DeSensio would have had that opportunity. I didn't agree with it. But at that point in time, uh, you know, that's what the council wanted. And so you set the parameters. This time, the parameters weren't set that way. And I think it's a disservice. I think it always is. You want the best person. You don't want a person just to fill a spot, just to keep a seat warm. You want a person that's going to do the work. We all know that the work needs to be done. We hear it and see it every single day. Alderman McMiniman?
Mr. Mayor, I think you summarized it really well. We want the best person. There's no qualifying criteria or disqualifying criteria. It's a combination of everything. And let's face it, the residents of Ward Three should be the folks that you're listening to, Mayor, not the individual Aldermen around the table. Because Mr. Williams is not going to be representing Ward Seven or Ward any Ward, except Ward Three. And that, those are the folks I think that should have the greatest say in this. So, uh, and I think the points have been made that we don't have in our city code some kind of requirement that you can't run for office down the road. So, you know, tonight, Mr. Williams needs seven votes because it's on emergency passage. Two weeks from now, Mr. Williams only needs five votes plus the mayor. Let's not drag this out for two weeks. Let's give that representation that Mr. Gregory talked about. We want to fill that seat as soon as we can so that the Ward Three residents can be represented. That's the logical, uh, purpose here and I hope we get it done tonight.
Any other discussion or comments? So clerk, if you please call the roll.
Alderman Gregory.
Aye. Whoops, you skipped one.
I'm sorry. Alderman Redpath.
No.
Aye.
Yep. Alderman Fulgenzie.
Aye.
Alderman Proctor. Alderwoman DeSensio.
No.
Alderman McMiniman.
Yes.
Alderwoman Conley.
No.
Alderman Donlin.
No.
Alderman Hanauer.
No.
Six noes and three yeses, Mayor.
Mayor, point of order.
Yep. You'll have to wait here. You can, uh, you're signed up later, Alice. Next item on the agenda is document number 2020-442, an ordinance authorizing a renewal cable television franchise agreement with Comcast of Illinois, Indiana, Ohio LLC for a period of 10 years. Ordinance will be held, right? You want to give an explanation, please?
Um, there.
Your mic's off. There you go.
Okay, sorry. Um, we are actually waiting to get some language back from, uh, the Comcast on the issue about, uh, providing for payment plans when there are large extensions. And it's taken a little bit of, uh, effort, however, uh, they have indicated that they will try to get that approved and we're waiting to get that language. Uh, you may remember like Alderman Redpath when that issue came up with that long extension where the person got the bill for like $4,000.
Right.
And so we've asked them to include a payment process so in the event that there might be a higher amount, it could be stretched over like 24 months. And that has been what they indicated just very briefly, don't want to take too much of your time, but, uh, they'd indicated that they have not agreed in the past to do that. However, after discussion, uh, Friday and then yesterday, uh, they said they were going to take it back and try to develop a system to do that. So they asked if we could, they'd have a chance to respond to that, so they should have it by the next meeting.
So, tell me, what happens if we defeat this?
Well, they, uh, just very briefly, um, they could operate under the state law provisions. We're better off having the, uh, franchise agreement in place, uh, just by way of some control over terms, some control over some discussion. But they have a right, if you recall that issue with the, uh, uh, communications company that was extending and they went through the state, uh, Illinois Commerce Commission to get approvals. Uh, so we're better off, uh, trying to have that discussion with them rather than push them in that, to that direction.
And incorporation council, the reason I is, I'm opposed to this, this ordinance is because the enormous amount of complaints, not just in my ward, but all of our wards, about the programming and, and all, all other kinds of, the, the maintenance and all kinds of stuff, is that, I mean, if we, if we don't have the power to control what we have under our own city, how, how do we get it through the state of Illinois to, to tell them that we need better control? Because it's, it's ridiculous. They're stepping all over us. Alls we're doing is providing them, uh, a monopoly that shouldn't be, uh, shouldn't be taking, shouldn't be happening. This is, I, I'm not blaming you, Corporation Council, I know you're fighting for us, but here's the thing, we cannot, we cannot let our citizens be trampled on by, by a, by a company with, that has a monopoly. It's ridiculous.
And just very briefly, you've, you've outlined some of the problems. The, uh, there's a federal communications act that preempted the city's authority to do things like the programming and the, uh, voting on fees, for example. Uh, the state law operates within the federal system. The state law has preempted primarily, uh, home rule, except in a couple of areas. One of them has to do with both, uh, both the term of the agreement and then also some very limited amount of customer service type items. For example, what we're just talking about. But, uh, the city, or any city, has, uh, virtually no ability to, to, um, regulate the substance. Now, they are not, they do not exercise a monopoly. Um, they, we could grant another.
Well, you know, I misspoke on, on monopoly terms, but just, it just seems like they're controlling the whole thing. And, and what, by signing any agreement with them, we cannot allow anybody else to come into our city and try to put in competition in order for us to get better service because that's, that's what's happening. I mean, there is, there is, uh, the other.
I three broadband.
You know, DirecTV and that kind of stuff, but it's not the same thing as the cable. I mean, my service is poor at best and, um, can't get them to even come down the street. I mean, my, 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 uh, the place where I'm hooked up at is about three or four houses down from me. I can't get, my, my service is terrible. And I'm not speaking for myself, I hear from my, my constituents all the time. And that's why I'm, I'm strongly opposing this. And I understand what you're saying, Corporation Council, that we need to at least have some say over a few things, but it's ridiculous. It really is. And I'm not blaming you, I know you're the messenger.
The, uh, what I was simply going to try to explain was, we, the, the Comcast franchise is not exclusive, meaning there could be a competitor. But what's happening in the marketplace is, um, not hardwiring, but the, uh, and I'm not a tech person, but more of the, uh, broadband, Wi-Fi.
Right.
You know, streaming process. And so Comcast, I think, feels that they're under a lot of massive competitive pressures because the phone company is starting to provide, you know, AT&amp;T. You've got a whole bunch of competition, it's just coming in, in a different fashion.
Well, it can't come fast enough for me, Corporation Council. I'm just telling.
I understand and, understand your, your point very well.
Alderwoman Conley, then Alderman Hanauer.
Oh, sorry, I was moving my, um, just real quickly, I did want to, um, make sure, um, Corporation Council, this, this agreement, we are going to be shortening the timeframe when it finally gets through. So we're, okay, thank you.
Alderman Hanauer?
Well, Chuck, you're, you're going to know when they come out to you, when I three comes out to your, uh, your ward, because you'll be getting phone calls. I think Aaron and I can vouch for that. They, uh, you're, they tear up the yards, they're good about getting it back in place, but, um, their, their notification is, is somewhat, uh, to be desired, but, uh, so there, it's going to come. You know, we, the only thing, and, and I agree, I, you get complaints about Comcast, the price and, and everything, and, but they're all the same. They're all, if, DirecTV, you get the same complaints, you get, I get, I've, I've heard from people on DirecTV, um, I three, you know, and their installation issues. And they're all expensive. I mean, they're, the cost is, is gone up and, and, um, you know, we did, I think we have made some pretty substantial, uh, changes to this contract. We dropped a, it's not a 10-year contract, it's what, five and a couple year renewables or something like that. And we've, we've made them, uh, we've updated some terms, I think, in the construction aspect.
Correct.
Uh, because we had some problems. So, so, I mean, we've added some things that, that from, because of feedback from the people, um, that we've, we've added some things that, that has helped, helped, will help out the city. But I, I mean, we're, the lack of control, that's more, that's because of the federal government and.
I understand where you come from, Alderman. I don't have to like it and my constituents don't like it. So that's where I'm at.
Yeah. You'll be getting I three eventually. You, you, you'll have competition. You'll know when they're there.
The only thing I'm going to say on that, we have been working hard on it. And Alderman Redpath, at least your constituents have a voice. So I hope everybody remembers that in two weeks. Your constituents have a voice. Next item on the agenda is 2021-034, an ordinance authorizing execution of an annexation agreement between the city of Springfield, Illinois and Cochran Development LLC for property located at Old Salem Lane. Chair will entertain a motion to recess regular sit, meeting of the city council and hold a public hearing regarding this annexation agreement.
Point of order, Mayor, did we vote? Did we vote on?
It's held, uh.
It's held, Ralph.
Yeah, and, and just briefly, the reason it is, we're waiting to get some more contract language back.
That's right, okay.
Just on that.
I'm sorry, thank you.
Financing provision.
Is there a motion for a public hearing?
To move.
Second.
The move in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. We're open for a public hearing. Is anybody wish to address the council on this annexation? Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the regular meeting of the city council. The move, Mayor.
Second.
The move in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, or say aye.
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 Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion, place agenda number 2021-034 on final passage. The move in second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk will call the roll. All right. Beginning with Alderman Redpath.
Aye.
I think the voting machine isn't working if, if acceptable to everybody.
So go ahead and, uh, cast your votes for the.
Technology works again. Here we go.
There we go.
Hang on, there we go. And the motion passes, nine voting yes, none voting no, one voting present. Next item on the agenda is document number 2021-035, an ordinance annexing certain described rural properties located at Salem. The chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-035 on final passage.
To move.
Second. The move in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, nine voting yes, none voting no, one voting present. Chair will entertain a motion to, for a nominist vote for agendas numbers 2021-038 through 2021-049.
So move.
For appointments and reappointments. The move in second, any discussion?
Is there anyone here?
Yep. We'll have him come up. All in favor of the nominist vote, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. I'll read them into the record, but those here, if you'd come forward and introduce yourself, we'd appreciate it, and anything else you'd like to state. 2021-038, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Beverly Christian to the Springfield Planning and Zoning Commission. 2021-039, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Joseph E. Gooden to the Springfield Planning and Zoning Commission. 2021-040, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Dean Graven to the Springfield Planning and Zoning Commission. 2021-041, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Greg Kruger to the Springfield Planning and Commission, Zoning Commission. 2021-042, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Timothy Moore Esquiar to the Springfield Planning and Zoning Commission. 2021-043, an ordinance approving the appointment of Stephen M. Simpson Black to the Springfield Planning and Zoning Commission. 2021-044, an ordinance approving the appointment of Emmett L. Hale to the Springfield Planning and Re, uh, Zoning Commission. 2021-045, an ordinance approving the appointment of Stella Dean to the Springfield Planning and Zoning Commission. 2021-046, an ordinance approving the reappointment of Molly Burns to the Springfield Historic Sites Commission. 2021-047, ordinance approving the appointment of Erskine Rute to the Springfield Urban Forestry Commission. 2021-048, an ordinance approving the appointment of Jeffrey S. Batis to the Lincoln Library Board of Trustees. And 021-049, an ordinance approving the appointment of Martin Ryan to the Lincoln Library Board of Trustees. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-08 through 2021-049 on final passage.
So move.
Second.
Move in second, I know Greg Kruger, she, or any other appointments, if you'd like to come up real quick and introduce yourselves, anybody else in the audience? I know somewhere here at the committee. Appreciate you coming tonight.
Good evening, Mayor.
Good evening.
Commissioner Alderman, Greg Kruger, been on the zoning board now for four years. Appreciate your vote.
You want to say a little bit about yourself?
I've been a real estate broker for over 40 years now. Construction business, property management, and lived in Springfield biggest part of my life. So enjoy it here.
Thank you.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you for your service.
My pleasure.
Especially on the zoning board.
It's fun. Interesting.
It's a tough one.
Any other questions? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Thank you.
Thank you. The appointments pass, nine voting yes, none voting no, none voting present. Next item on the agenda is document number 2021-052, an ordinance authorizing a one-year extension of the intergovernmental cooperation agreement with Salem County Illinois Board of Health for Animal Control Services. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number 2021-052 on final passage.
So move.
Second.
The move in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The clerk, or the voting is now open. And the ordinance passes, six voting yes, three voting no, and one voting present. Next item on the agenda, or the chair will entertain a motion to suspend the rules in place on first reading, document number 2021-079, an ordinance amending chapter 36 of the 1988 City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended by amending section 36.58, adding maternity and paternity adoption leave.
So moved.
Second.
The move in second, any discussion? All those, Alderman Conley.
Real quick, I do want to point out it's 78, not 79.
Pardon me?
It's, it's 2021-078.
You said 79.
Okay. Seventeen.
Sorry, just want to make sure we get it right in there.
Yep. We'll make note of that. Any other discussion?
I would just like to also thank Corporation Counsel for getting this put together so quickly.
Very good.
With amendments, thank you.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business come before the council? Any new business come before the council? Is there any citizens wishing, oh, sorry, Alderman McMinima.
You know, Mr. Mayor, I was watching TV last night and I, I saw our fire chief state that he was making rounds to the firehouses to prepare our firefighters for layoffs. And I just want to say that I think that's very untimely. Why? Because we just approved over $40 million for the fire department, which starts the new fiscal year. And I believe there's four empty positions and expected eight retirements. So it just seems to me that at the start of a fiscal year, when we've just appropriated $40 million, it's way too early to be using that kind of language. No, I'm not asking you to come up. I think, I think it's inappropriate to scare our newly hired firefighters in that way. I think maybe one half year into the fiscal year, if we don't have this resolved, that might be the right time to start talking about that. I don't recall any, the sponsor of the ordinance, Alderman Redpath, said he's, he's not talking about layoffs. And I think all those that supported the amendment that night didn't talk about layoffs. So I just think that our fire leadership has got to be much more careful with the language they use and the talk that they're talking when they circulate with our firehouses. Unless that TV 20 report was inaccurate, that it's, they had you quoted and they had you live and had your voice on the TV. So just wanted to get that out, Mr. Mayor.
Alderman DeSenzel, then Alderman Conley.
Yes, I'd like the chief to come up, please, and respond to that.
I did go out and talked to all of the fire personnel that were on shift yesterday. This was the third time that I've made rounds to the fire personnel. I actually started to talk to them before everything had happened as far as the cuts went in place. After doing the math, it did not appear that there's any way that we're going to be able to avoid layoffs. We had a meeting today with the mayor and some people on the fire department and Corporation Counsel and Director McCarty. The mayor's asked me to wait and look at, try and making some more solutions, but by the, just by looking at the, at the math, there wasn't enough money in there to keep enough firefighters on there. And I do think it's prudent for me to give people a heads up that when there's a possibility that there's not going to be enough money in the budget, to let them know that this is a possibility. I think that is absolutely responsible in the way that I should have done it. As far as the way that everything went down last week, I think that there probably could have been some better communication on the front side as far as the fire department and the members of council. But basically what was said, and this isn't verbatim, was that they're going to, you're going to have to figure out how to make these cuts. The only way that I saw to make these cuts, and mind you, the, the first version of this amendment that I saw had dates and cuts and layoffs in it. And that date was May 1st. I have a responsibility to the people who work for me to give them enough notice to get their, to get their ducks in order so that if this is going to happen to them, that they're prepared for it. I don't think that, I don't apologize at all for talking to my people and preparing them for something that might happen.
Mr. Mayor, can I respond?
Sure.
You know, I think that, that you've just repeated your mistake, chief, because you just said, quote, "There is no way to avoid layoffs." You've just said that again. And this here is the policymaking body. You're not the policymaking body. And I think it's unfair, inappropriate to scare our firefighters that way, especially the young ones who'd be first to be laid off. And I think it, in my opinion, it jeopardizes your position as fire chief to be so callous and reckless at the start of a fiscal year to reach, to reach that ultimate conclusion that we're not going to have enough money by the end of the fiscal year. It's just, it's just wrong. And I think, you know, Alderman Redpath clarified it last week. He said his amendment is not a layoff amendment. And so now you're contradicting Alderman. And you're contradicting what the mayor just had to say. I think it's a serious mistake in judgment and in position.
Well, I think with regards to that, one thing I will say is, there's been a lot on social media, through the media. We did have a good meeting today and, you know, we're going to work through this. I mean, that's the bottom line. And I told everybody in the meeting, it's not about this year, it's not about next year, it's about 10 years from now. What are we going to do for the incoming department and make sure that we provide the level of service we do today for the future? And what does that look like? We all know that it's all changed. They talk about the EMS calls, it's through the roof. And, you know, decades ago, that wasn't the same. But we have the same essential structure that we did back then. So any business would tell you, or, you know, any entity would tell you through time, especially after pandemic, everybody thinks, if any department in the City of Springfield think that how they operated before the pandemic is okay, they better think again, because everything's changing. Just look around us. Got Plexiglas, got masks. How are we going to serve the public? We're here to serve the public. And so that's the whole challenge for all of us. In this case, we're speaking to the fire department, we're going to work our way through. Alderman Conley, then Alderman Redpath.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I have a, just a brief question for you. The amendment that was passed last week, which line did that cut in your budget?
Uh, the, what I saw was all in the 1100 line.
And what line is that?
Which is all personnel.
Okay. So it may not have been spelled out with dates and numbers of people, but this council, by a majority vote, not a unanimous vote, did choose to cut over $1 million from your personnel line.
That's, that's the way it was presented last week to me, yes.
I will say, and I've heard the critique with the EMS concept and that, that our firefighters are going on those calls. We all received a very compelling letter from Mr. Ed Curtis from, from the Memorial Medical Center, really talking in detail about the value that your firefighters add to our emergency response system in this city. I voted against this amendment because I represent a large number of senior citizens in senior living centers who are living independently and able to do so because we have inherent in our emergency response system, quality emergency technicians, quality people like your, your crews. And how many fires did we have this week?
We had three today.
We've had three fires today. And how many people are in the hospital because of those fires?
I haven't gotten those numbers yet.
I, the ones that I saw was that everyone was out of the house safely and the fire was out within less than an hour. We have not seen major structural fires in this city for a very long time. And a big part of that is because we have an active responsive fire department. And there's no price you can put on that. That is a huge value added to our entire community. I know people have talked about other departments getting cuts. You all saw last year, I wanted to add to the fire, or the police department's budget because we need to be building in a time coming out of the pandemic, Mayor. We should be looking with a growth mentality for our community. And to me, that means we build those resources, we build those services that people expect as basic services. We want to attract new businesses. We have a responsive fire department. We have a healthy, strong police department that's active and engaged in our community. And we have a public works that's able to deal with our streets, our sidewalks, and those basic concerns. None of those things should be taken for granted. I will say again, the cuts were made to the personnel line. I have been one of those people who's gotten laid, laid off. I've, I've sat in the, the limbo that is not knowing what's going to happen to you before you get laid off. I've gone through that whole process. It is not pleasant. But I will tell you this, I understand and appreciate your respect and consideration for your employees. Because at least having the honest conversation about what may very well happen, people have the information and they can make their own decisions. And I wasn't going to bring this up tonight, but since it has been brought up, I appreciate your candor and your support for your fire department.
Thank you.
Alderman Redpath, then Alderman Hanauer.
Chief, first off, I don't blame you for going and talking to your guys. I, I know that Alderman McMinima's comments were how he feels, but I've been in your shoes. I've, I've commanded people, 170 officers, and I, I understand the tough times when we have to make tough decisions. This is a process. And I sat in the mayor's office with the mayor, Corporation Counsel, and Mr. McCarty. And I thought that the amendment was supposed to be across the board, Mayor, is that correct?
That's correct.
And so if that was put in only the 1100 line item, that was a mistake.
It wasn't.
Excuse me?
Go ahead, Director McCarty.
It was not all out of the personnel lines.
How much was out of the personnel line?
1.26 million. The rest was out of other operations.
Thanks for clarifying that, Alderman Redpath, because I thought the same thing.
So, so, so what I'm telling you, chief, is that this is a process and I, it wasn't intended to necessarily go after layoffs. Layoffs are possible, there's no doubt about it. But I think that this process can be worked out and we have to stay talking. I'm glad the mayor convened meetings with you and so we can figure this out. We don't want to lay off any firemen, not one. You've got a darn good fire department, good people, they work very hard and, and we want to, we want to keep them. But we have to, we have a serious problem here. And everybody knows the elephant in the room. The elephant in this room is, is that if we don't get it under control, we're, we're facing some major tax increases and we don't have a choice about that. The Peoria Fire Department closed down two firehouses, laid off 22 people. And, and then they also put on a, a pilot tax, which I've never heard of doing it before, but they put on a pilot tax to all, to all, non, what is it?
Nonprofit.
Nonprofit organizations like hospitals and, and government buildings and churches and that kind of thing to help cover the costs, not only for the fire and police, but for the public works area. Property taxes in Springfield would be devastating and we got to try to devoid it. We got a lot of time here, we're not, and the mayor's going to tell you that we're not laying people off this week, we're not laying them off next month. We're, we're going to try to work through this to come up with a better compromise. And that's what we really want to do, chief. I've been in your shoes, I know how tough it is. So just, I, I appreciate the fact that you care about your people, because that's the first thing I was taught by my dad, who was a chief, to take care of your folks. And, and I understand where you're at on that. But we got to work through this and we got to continue talking with administration, the fire department, and whoever else we have to have in the room to try to come to a better compromise.
Thanks. Just to respond to, the conversations that were had in those firehouses wasn't that we are laying people off. The conversations, and I think that you have, I don't know how many people I spoke to yesterday, probably in the 50s, were that layoffs are possible, it may be difficult to avoid. So.
Again, you know, you, you said it tonight, quote, "There is no way to avoid layoffs." How can we be more precise and specific? Alderman Redpath has been very charitable with you, very charitable in my opinion.
I think what I said was, the numbers show that there's no way to avoid layoffs. And then I spoke with the mayor and a number of people today and that he encouraged me to give it another go. So that's what we're going to do. The mayor advised me that he does not want to do layoffs, layoffs, so we're going to work on, on possible other, other solutions that are out there. But I've made that commitment to the mayor. But I've made that commitment to the mayor, and I wanted to make sure that my people were informed so that they knew what might be coming down the pipe.
Chief, just one more thing, if I might, please, if you don't, one more thing is that Chief Helmerx had some ideas on, on how to trim the budget a little bit. Please look at those ideas. I'm not saying that, that's exactly how it's going to work for you, but there are ideas out there that we have to look, we have to think outside the box, Chief. We've got to really do that. Because we don't want to lay off firefighters, we don't. Thank you.
Appreciate it.
One thing I will say is, in that meeting too, I saw, told the chief specifically, he's not to lay off anybody. If he thinks that's the case, he'll have to come to me. Because this is where it happens. And so during this, two years without a state budget through a pandemic, I've never furloughed anybody and never laid anybody off. I don't intend to do it right now, forever. You hope you can work through it. And that's what I've done when I was city treasurer, same thing. Other areas were doing it, I never believed in it. That's a case of last resort. And I think we need to really take a look at what the fire department needs to look like post-pandemic. And that's what the challenge is before us, and we'll definitely do that. Alderman Hanauer, and then Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, last week, this last week, had a lot of contact from people on both sides of it. I can definitely tell you that Ward 10 is a no for property taxes. They outweighed the cuts. My vote last week was not for layoffs. What it was, to get you guys to look, we're doing 19,000 EMS calls, and we're doing, what, 250, 300 fires, is to, we got to start looking at how we retool things. It's, it's, you know, we're, we're following the, the methods that we were following as far as Manning and everything. It's, we're following a lot of that from way back. I've, I've supported the fire department on every vote that we've had. And I kind of feel like this one, that we did last year, last week, felt like a year ago.
No, it doesn't.
But it feel, but, but I did, my vote was to, to, in a way, to try to save the fire department. Because when the time comes, and, and Director McCarty showed us how that snowball's coming downhill, and we're going to go through our fund balance like crazy. And I would love to increase the police department, I'd love to increase public works, I'd love to give everybody raises, I'd love to do everything. But we cannot afford it. Because what we're going to be stuck with is you, it's not just going to be laying off and shutting down firehouses, it's going to be laying off public works people. It's going to be laying off people all over the city, and we don't want to do that. And I cannot stress to you enough, all of us, we have got to watch our spending. We, we have to. Because if the projections are true, and I'll just say, let's just say they're off a year. If the projections are true, before election, or it might be right after the election, and we'll give it the benefit of the doubt after we were up for election, there will have to be a decision on a major tax increase to keep things going, or you're going to have to reduce services substantially. So, Chief, I'm, I'm just telling you, my vote last, last week, the way I see it, it was trying to, in a sense, save the department a little bit so that we don't have to cut firehouses. And, and I've told everybody, I don't, I don't want to see layoffs. And, and that, that wasn't my intent on the vote. But we, we have to do something. Because if we don't, it's going to be catastrophic, not only for yours, but for every direct, every agency that we have, every department. And there's no, there's no going around it.
Alderman Donlin.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, thanks for coming up and talking.
Enjoyed it.
Yeah, I bet you have.
You love this part of your job, don't you?
It is, it's my favorite.
Chief, you know, you came in, obviously, at a, at a bad time, and I want to thank you and your men and women of the department for everything they do on a daily basis.
Appreciate that.
And they leave the, the budgetary decisions aside and go out and do the job and do it well. And we have a Class 1 department because of that. You know, I didn't support the, the ordinance, and primarily why I didn't is what was stated tonight, that 1.2 out of the 1.4 is, of the cuts do come from personnel lines, and obviously that's where people are paid from. So logic has it that it's going to eventually impact that particular line and those functions. But that, that said, I appreciate you, your willingness to try to figure something out and to come back to us in two weeks. And that's really what I was going to ask, I didn't know you were going to get up here tonight, but, because Alderman Hanauer is right about the global situation that we're going to be presented with. As far as I'm concerned, real estate tax increases off the table. Really, the, if, if things don't change with revenue in the future, and I'm talking citywide, that cuts are going to have to be made. That's just how it is. That's what was done in 2008 and '09 when we had the Great Recession, and, and even the years thereafter. We cut headcount majorly. That trend continued for over 10 years. And we're doing more with less people. And that's no secret, the director harps on that every time he gets up and speaks. But I just, anything we can do, we, I'm hearing a lot from constituents, they want the services that we have now in the fire department, public safety preserved. And anything we can do to help with that, I'm certainly willing to talk to you, chat with you, listen, you can bounce ideas off of us. You know, some of your process is really good at that. And, but it's important, public safety is one of the reasons why I got in this position, something I ran on, something I've been supportive of. But, you know, we're, you're in a situation where you've, you've got 1.4 million dollars less, you got to find a, make it work, make, make it work within your department, where the mayor's got to find a way to make it work within the city. He's got to find it from somewhere else within the corporate budget. So, anyway, thank you, Chief.
Appreciate it.
Any other comment? Oh, sorry, Alderman Conley.
Thank you. And Chief, this isn't really for you so much as just kind of the council and, and the community at large. I, I do want to point out that we have, this council did vote to dedicate, our newest tax stream that we had, 1.5% on the recreational marijuana, goes to that big, that big pile that we're trying to take a bite of, which is our police and fire pensions. We weren't sure what that would look like, but given the first six months of that program, we're talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars going in to help reduce the burden on top of the payments we've already made into this, that, that, that debt, including an extra $600,000 just a few weeks ago. So I would like to say, I understand concern, and Alderman Hanauer and I have had multiple conversations about this. We do want to be prudent with our funds, but we also need to recognize as a council that we are in a very fortunate position right now. We were able to put an extra payment into the pension fund, we've got new money coming in that's addressing that. And, and while Director McCarty has said himself that he, he does go for the, you know, the doom and gloom scenario to prepare us so that we, we are ready for the worst, I will say that we can also budget and we can also plan for a better case. And, and I'd like to be optimistic about that as we come out of this pandemic and situate this city for a place of growth, for a place of development. And it doesn't have to be new taxes, it doesn't have to be our community taking on more burden, and it shouldn't be. I'm very proud of the fact that every year, Director McCarty starts his presentation with, relative to comparable communities, the city of Springfield is a lower tax city. I know people are going to scoff at me, I can already hear it on the radio tomorrow morning, but we do keep our taxes low, and we, we recognize that's a need. We add this sin tax, we're going to take, we're going to take some of the burden of that pension payment down. And I think we just need, as a council, we also need to ensure that we're being creative and that we're, we're backing the people who provide our safety.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Alderman McMinima.
Last week, I didn't give my reason for voting no to the appropriation couns, appropriation ordinance, I just said the same usual reasons. So I'm going to just, in one minute, explain to some of the new members on the council that last year, the unfunded balance for police and fire rose by $40 million, and the year before that, by $20 million. So I think we have to be very understanding that $100,000 or $200,000 of new revenue doesn't cut it.
$500,000?
And $500,000 doesn't even take a slice out of that $40 million that was added last fall to our calculated pension debt. And so I really appreciate the Alderman tonight that are looking down the road and seeing the horrendous position, financial position, we're going to have to face. And that we have to look at these budgets carefully. And we've got a big challenge down the road, Mr. Mayor, and I think you're very much aware of it.
Alderman Redpath, and Alderman Gregory.
Just a final thought, you know, we are using close to $4.5 million of fund balance to pay, to balance our budget. Some of that is part of the state of Illinois, once again, taking $1.5 million out of our sales tax revenues without any explanation and probably not going to ever pay it back. So that kind of puts us in a, in a box to start with. But, but Mayor, I, I know Alderman McCarty, I mean, Director McCarty, I always do that, sorry about that. He's working on some comparables that are going to, supposed to be coming to us, is that, is that correct?
Yeah, as far as we're looking at that, but if you could give an explanation of the, the states has not taken effect yet, that has to be passed through the budget, right?
The state cut has not yet.
Right. That will come in July.
Well, it will in May, probably.
Oh, May.
So that's about $1.5 million that we're dealing with.
That's out there still.
1.2.
1.2, thank you.
And then the other side of it, of course, is I think they're trying to close loophole on commercial taxes, or, and so supposedly that will give us some type of relief, but time will tell. But we'll be busy over the State House through Illinois Municipal League and ourselves. That's one of the discussion points that was brought up today with the importance of the ramp. You know, Alderman McMinima might not like to hear this, but I'm a firm believer in you move the ramp out 20 years. And the reason for that, with the caveat that the municipalities have to make a commitment to close the gap on the funding. Because what it does, it's just like refinancing your house. So with that extra funds, it takes the pressure off the cash flow of the city. But what you should be doing is making a commitment to pay for the funding levels. We're at all-time interest rate low right now, and I think that's a way to do it. But the other caveat is, Tier 2, you'd have to have a state legislature enact saying, we're not going to give any more benefits back. It's already had action where state, it's my understanding, Tier 2 has, you know, legislators have passed some additional benefits for Tier 2. And that was supposed to rectify the whole situation. So those are the discussions that have to be handled at the State House that tries to put a stop to the, or help put a stop to the runaway train of the unfunded liability of the.
Well, we've got a new senator over there, I think he'll carry the water for us on that, Mayor.
Yep, well, she'll need more than just her. So hopefully, there'll be a, a lot of others.
Mr. Mayor, very briefly, just extending, on extending the ramp, that can ease the payment obligation. But let's all remember, let's all remember that in 2010, in 2010, the legislature extended the ramp. They did a ramp extension back in 2010 by seven years. And what happened in the meanwhile? We just went deeper into debt. So you can extend the ramp, but you need financial discipline to set a realistic rate of return assumption and some other assumptions, or the debt just gets worse. So the ramp is not a solution without strong fiscal discipline by the municipality.
No doubt about it. Anything else? Oh, Alderman Gregory, sorry.
No, I just, I just wanted to say, you know, this has been a fun week, of course. And, and I've talked to some constituents, and, you know, as I said, I haven't stuck my head in the sand, and, and I'm trying to work with, with everyone and, and really trying to, you know, put my thinking cap on. You know, I've, I've talked to, to all sides, and, and, you know, first thing I would say is my, my vote last week was truly of my own. Nobody controls me or runs me, I'm not this naive kid, I can read and write just like everybody else. The numbers that presented to, to me, it does look bleak, it, it does, it does look bleak. Now, I, I, I realize that accounting is, is, you know, can, can, the numbers can play, right? But when we, when we really come down to it, we, we definitely got to come up to where we're actually going to be at. One of the questions that I do have for Mr. McCarty, I think you, you did address it before, on the holiday pay and their, in their budget, why, why do we put that in there in the salary line? Again, I know you said it's something about pension, and is there a way that we can move that to another line so we can really get a, a clear understanding of what that is going to be since, you know, holidays do happen every year?
We've consistently put it in the overtime line. It's been that way for years. So when you're looking at comparing year over year, it is apples to apples. The reason it's there is because holiday pay is not, it's not pensionable. It's extra pay that you get for, well, it's not supposed to be pensionable, but that's another situation. It's extra pay you get only if you work. So it's like overtime. So you come in on a holiday, you work it, you get extra pay for it, just like if you come in on a hire back, you get extra pay because you came in and you worked that hire back. Similar, it's the same philosophy. You can move it anywhere you want, but the numbers are what the numbers are.
Okay. All right, thank you. So, you know, my feeling is, is, you know, I, we don't want any more fees or anything like that. You know, I've, I've, I've talked, I've looked at the numbers and stuff, it, it does look like it's pretty tight, but I'll say this, I take the mayor at his word of no layoffs, I take Mr. Redpath at his word of no layoffs. And, and I hope that you believe me when I tell you, I, I don't stand for layoffs and I'm not going to support layoffs. So I hope that we can keep working towards a, a solution for the citizens of Springfield, the growth of Springfield that we have, and we can be innovative and looking, you know, down the line to make sure we're able to deliver this, this great service. So I appreciate you. I know it's tough on you.
Chief, I just promised to never call you back up here again.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Thanks, Chief. Does there anybody wish to address the council?
Welcome back, Alice.
Yeah, we missed you.
She signed up, she said she wasn't going to speak, and I knew that was a lie.
Because if it wasn't for the fire department, I would not be here, or the police department, because I had a heart attack. Not because I was fighting with Roy, it's because I was fighting with the fact that people don't do their jobs. Okay? Mayor, I'm sorry that you're sitting in that seat and this council slapped you twice in the face. Once for the casino and once to disrespect your opinion about Roy. I have seen you do a lot of things, but I have never heard this council do that. I am very disappointed in that, in this council. Especially the ones that don't have anything to say about Ward 3. I lived in Ward 3. I fought Evergreen Terrace, I fought Popular Place. And I know one thing, I'd rather have him in the hole with me than any of you others. Do you understand what I'm saying? I have fought many a battle, and I have fought many a battle with him. In fact, we even fought one day. He tried to tell me I wasn't doing something right, turned around, I was doing it right, he just didn't see it, okay? If I was going to have anybody sit in Doris Turner's seat, it would be Roy. And you know I've fought many a day with Doris Turner. So I have a lot of respect for her. And I have a lot of respect for you and your opinion, because you did pick the right person for Doris Turner's seat. And I feel sorry that the next time you suggest something in this body of horseshoes, decide to slap you in the face again. Because I have a lot of respect for you and your family, and a lot for your father at one time. Okay? Still do. Now, the other thing I want to say is if it wasn't for the fire department and the police department and the ambulance getting there as fast as they did, I would not be here. Because I did have a heart attack that was very, very serious. And I respect the fire department, and I respect the police department, and also the ambulance that came and got me. Because I really wasn't going to the hospital. I thought, heck, it's just gas or something. But it wasn't. It was for real. And it scared me to the point of that while he was talking and while you guys were talking, I thought, well, how in the world am I going to pay for the fire department to come and take care of me, or the police department, or the ambulance? Because it sounds like you guys just don't understand how important these are. I mean, really important. I mean, really important. They go in when everybody else is running out, you know? And that's the way Roy is. When there's a problem in the neighborhood, he doesn't run away, he runs to it, find out what the situation is, and really get down to the point and help. That's a lot of difference. You don't want somebody sitting up there that's not going to help, that's not going to even do this. You want somebody that's going to work, and tell it like it is. And fight with you guys to do what is right. Even Redpath's family knows how I am. I've lived in this town ever since I was knee-high to a pocat, rode my horses out the fairgrounds, lived in the North End. In fact, I lived in a house that was a bootlegger's house at one time. Now I'm on Livingston, and I've lived there for 62 years. But I'll tell you one thing, I'm not ready to move, although I have a chance to move to Las Vegas. But I'm not going, because I want to fight for my city, I want to fight for my neighborhood. I want this city to be one of the top-notch cities in the state of Illinois. And it's hard if you don't have people working. I even called up on your ward when I was in there, and Joe's, and the rest of them. Because I want to see our city together, in unity for everybody, not for just because Johnny's over here. But what I heard tonight hurt my heart, and I'm not going to the hospital again either. So Gregory, I'm on your side, and I'll fight as hard as you do. In fact, maybe a little bit harder, because I've been fighting that. And Roy, I'll be there every day when you sit in Doris Turner's seat. And I mean that from my heart, and you know I'm a pill, okay? And I mean that from my heart, too. Just like I told the mayor one time before, if he doesn't pick the right person, no need to have a Ward 3. And you don't need to give us trash, give us people that are going to work, and that's what Roy will do, from the bottom of his heart. I know he didn't run when he was in the service, and I know darn well he's not going to run if he sits in that seat. So when you go home tonight, you think about that no you said, and that no you said, and that no. Maybe someday you'll know why your kids don't want to hear the no. Thank you, and God bless you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to address the council? Your motion for adjournment?
It's a move.
Second.
All fair, say aye.
Aye.
It's good to be back.
Good. Hey, did you have any adverse effects during the time?
I liked it, it liked it. Two days after the first shot, and one day after the second. But, what the hell? A little bit of sleep, my bad.
Never hurt anybody.
Yeah.
Good, good.